6:30.
So Finance Committee is going to open its meeting at 6:31.
Okay. Board of Selectmen meeting, March 2nd. It's our first budget meeting. The Board of Selectmen appointed Selectman LaCamera about a month ago. I don't know when it was back.
More than a month ago.
Yeah. To sort of run the budget stuff. So I was going to ask him if he wanted to handle the first few meeting things and then I can resume when we're done with the budget stuff so we can finish off the last few agenda items, if that, Rich, if you don't have a problem doing that.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Okay. Just a couple of things for the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is aware. When we sent out the budget letter, you know, we said that we wanted to try to maintain the staff and all the services that we currently have and then if there was opportunities to review it after, you know, we get to where we are as far as the budget concerned, would consider that. But right now, we're not considering any other staffing levels or whatever, just so you know. The second thing is that the contracts, the union contracts were up. We're in the process of negotiating those contracts. So in the budget that you see today, tonight, none of the budgets have any cost of living increases in the budgets, okay? So that'll have to be addressed as we go along here as well. It does include anybody that's entitled to a step increase, okay? There's step increases, you know, within the contracts and within the personnel policies and bylaws as well. So I just want you to know that, okay? So I guess the first group that's on the agenda is the library. And we have Nancy, Ruth, and Jamie.
Okay.
So I don't know. I know that Jamie always prepares very well for this and that she has information about the library and if you would briefly want to touch upon it. Go ahead, Jamie.
I don't know.
You don't have to say it.
So, good evening for those I haven't had a chance to meet. As Rich said, my name is Jamie Viveras. I'm Library Director here in Lakeville. And whenever we try to do the budget, you know, it's certainly trying to balance the needs of the department by taking into account that the town has some constraints too, but also to make you aware that we have certain requirements from the state too in order to participate in the state aid to libraries program. For those of you that may be new to this, I have the pink sheet which sort of explains the program itself. It's a really valuable program. Its main purpose is to encourage municipalities to support public library service and certainly there are some benefits to it. There is local aid that comes along with the program when you meet the requirements. So there's cherry sheet money. We get about $18,000 to $19,000 annually from that. You are eligible for other grant funds and more importantly, it makes you eligible for reciprocal borrowing, which means that Lakeville residents can borrow from other communities either by going physically to their library or calling those items in through the catalog because we're part of a consortium. So we share all of our materials with local libraries. But one of the requirements is really that the local municipality is supporting their library at a certain level, which then allows you to open up and borrow from other places. So for example, you know, down the street, the Lakeville Library, we've got about 50,000 items in the building, which is a sizable collection for a town this size. But by participating in reciprocal borrowing, just within sales alone, there's about 3.6 million. And when you go statewide, we're talking about 50 million items. So it's really important that Lakeville supports its library so that way it can go beyond the walls here. There are some requirements which are outlined here, meaning just to highlight them, you have to be open a certain number of hours. You have to spend a certain proportion of your library budget on materials. For a town this size, it ends up being about 16% of overall spending on library has to be for materials. We do have to lend to others. And we have to meet something that they call the municipal appropriation requirement. So that's where the yellow sheet comes in. There's lots of numbers on here. You also memorize them, but it gives you a breakdown of kind of what is required for us. So they're looking at the overall municipal funding history. This is the state. So they take a three-year average and they're looking for 2.5% on top of the three-year average just to make sure that library is constantly moving forward. Honestly, it works out to be about a 1% increase over any given year. And Lakeville has been well within these requirements during my time here. It's not necessarily been a problem. I do have some question about it this year only because the budget is somewhat undecided because of the contract negotiations. You know, typically, the cost of living increases has moved the library budget to a place where it meets the municipal appropriation requirement. But I have kind of at the tail end of my calculations, just sort of a question mark. Based on funding history, I have the threshold where we would need to be, but if we have, right now, the budget that went in is kind of at 0%, so we're not meeting that requirement. But there is plenty of time to get there. I know this process is going to continue on and the application isn't until October of 2020. So usually by the time you get to the other side of town meeting, it's fine. But I do want to just make it that with the current restrictions, if you will, if we stay at that, that we wouldn't be meeting the requirements. And the last sheet is information just to give you a sense of that we've been good stewards of the funding, that we've been appropriated in the past. So it's sort of a return on investment and accounts for all the things that we can have and come up with a cost value for. So, you know, we circulate over 100,000 items in a year and if you think about your residents here having to buy all of those items to come up with a number in terms of the value of service. And it really only represents a portion of the services that we offer because there's much more that happens in that building down the street in terms of programs and services than we can easily capture in terms of a return on investment. But when you look at just the things that people are borrowing and taking home and using, you know, for every dollar that the town has invested in us, that we return $4.47 in services just for the items that circulate and go home.
I have a question. Is the $4.47, is that normal? Is that high?
You know, not every library does this. You know, it's an exercise that I have done since I've been a library director or director just to give you a sense of, you know, you're putting money into the building and we can actually show you, at least in terms of how people are using it for borrowing, that we can return in terms of your investment. But it's not a number that necessarily every library has. So it's like, I don't have a figure for how we compare to other towns.
Has that number been consistent since you've been here?
It's been about, yeah, it's been anywhere from 4 to 4.50. Like, it's been on average. I could look at that in terms of giving you that information, but on average, it's about that.
Okay.
Which makes sense. We lend more, but, you know, the budget goes up, so it stays about even.
Okay.
Darren, so you know where the budget is? It's under Cultural Recreation in your book.
Yes. Yep, Historic Library.
In its Department, no, not Historic, Department 10, the 610.
Oh, right above it, Library.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. So now if I move to the budget sheets, under 610 for the library, you know, the salary changes really just represent, you know, not cost of living increases. Primarily for our department, it's we have a few people that have been on staff for some time. So we have folks moving from one category to the next in terms of longevity, which, you know, is a nice problem to have. Folks have been very dedicated. So I have one staff person moving to 5% after 15 years of service, or actually I have two of those in that category. So that represents the change there. As far as the expense lines, tried to keep those as even as possible. You know, there are some things that go up, but for the most part, you know, it's like electricity is based on a certain amount per month, heating and water service is kind of standard. Let me say, I don't know. I did take one adjustment where we, you know, for computer supplies, we're going to cover those out of gift funds and then we added a little bit into the book line. So, you know, this budget in terms of the way that it stands, in order to meet the requirement for the state with the 16%, we'd have to spend about 59,471 on materials next year. When you add up what we get from the town, it's about 41,100. So we do make up the difference with the state aid money that we receive when we get the municipal appropriation requirement that we have. I don't know if there are any particular questions about the budget or do you want more detail line by line?
So I would just ask, so if we didn't meet the margin there, which hopefully we do, right? So worst case scenario would be if we didn't get the, I forget the term, if we didn't get the approval for that this year, then that $18,000 is potentially no longer available to make up that difference and now it's even harder to get back to the materials expend.
Right. There's a process if your town is having difficulties, but one of the things, that process is actually outlined on that yellow sheet at the bottom. There is a waiver process, but you do have to show that you haven't disproportionately cut the library more than other departments. So it's a situation where, you know, the whole town is having, or the whole town is having a problem and everybody's kind of moving in this direction. We may not be meeting our MAR, but you can show, look, everybody's moved in this direction. The state is understanding of that, that sometimes there are things that are out of your control.
Okay.
But you do have to show that you're not disproportionately cutting the library. And then you're right, in terms of the MAR, it's not like you end up with a new threshold. You still have that requirement there and they give you some time to work back up to it. So, right, if you move backwards, it just makes it all that more difficult to catch up again to where you need to be.
Thank you.
As usual, I think, Jamie, you always do a good job. So, but if the salaries went up as they had done in the past, you would make your numbers. Okay. Where does the $18,000 and $19,000 go? Under state grants, does that go?
It goes under state grants.
That goes into the state grant fund?
Right. So it's not represented here as part of the appropriation.
Right.
Right.
Did you bring any of those sheets about where you are in the state grants? Last year you had a $40,000 unincumbent balance.
We have 26091 in our state grant account.
26 what?
$26,091.
So you used $14,000.
Right.
Approximately.
Mm-hmm. And we're probably at closer to 18 right now this year. But, you know, typically what's happened is you, the library has expended most, but not all. It's sort of like a safeguard and then you can do special projects out of it.
Right.
But, you know, that represents years of being fiscally careful and not expending all of it.
Right. So that grant fund was for service books, videos, and the sales program?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you're just down 14. That's fine because you get in 19.
Right. You know, as long as this, right, you meet that requirement, then in theory you get the money from the state. They are focusing on that part of the program this year at the state level to try to boost how much is coming back to towns.
And the gifts account was in the past about 16,000. And then there was a library building donations, which was about 24,000. You had about $39,000 in that account. Where does that stand now?
There's like 21 and change in the gift and the capital has 9,700.
I'm sorry. So the gifts last year was 15, what, 16? And what do you, what's that now? And I'll probably want those into the budget book so we know where they are as at the end of the year. So if last year was 15, 69, it says library gifts, what is that now approximately?
The gifts is about 21.
21, so it went up. And the library donations, it was a specific amount of 24,269. That's not to do with the expendable trust funds.
Right. No, that's not.
And so that was $39,000 last year. And what do you think that is?
See, I'm giving you current figures, so that's based on what we.
You're giving me what?
These, this is what I have in my spreadsheets as of today.
Yep, that's fine. There was a library donation fund the last year of 24,000. And do you know what that is now?
It's 9,000.
9,000, okay. And the expendable trust funds, which usually was donations. And that was a $61,000 balance as of last year.
But that probably includes the unexpendable.
And the unincumbent, right, the unincumbent balance was 61,000. So through all of the gifts, grants, and trust funds, last year you had 141,000 available.
Mm-hmm.
Or unincumbent. Do you know what that number is now?
Well, that's where I don't think it's quite that much now. So 22, 26.
Okay. I guess just to follow that to Maureen, to, you can look at the format that it was in, but it certainly was supplied, I assume, by you. So just so we can get it in the book, see how it's doing. I mean, there was a lot of money available, which I'm not complaining, a lot of money is a good thing. But through all of them, it was, it was three different totals totaling 141,000. State grants were 40,000, other gifts and grants were 40, and the, I call it the expendable trust funds were 61,000. So.
If you could send that to Todd.
Yeah. Then we'll just put it in the book.
I was like, Todd, yeah, Todd has it.
Well, we'll get it in the book.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah. Okay.
61,000 if you have the service.
Right. The 61 must include the, it includes the principal that cannot be expended, right?
Right.
So the principal should probably be in parentheses so people know that we can't spend the principal.
Right.
And it really doesn't count towards what we can spend.
Right. And you certainly could, I don't know where this, okay, I think it did come from Todd last year. So as long as you look at Todd's, then that's fine.
Those funds are all held in the town accountant and they're reviewed with the Board of Trustees.
Otherwise, I think.
It doesn't factor into the requirement from the state because it's not considered appropriated funding?
No, 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 no. I think if we do the cost of living, then the number should come out. We want to make sure, as Brian pointed out, we haven't made any mistakes in the last several years as long as we continue to get that 18, 19,000 a year. It's a great deal.
Right.
Good budget. I have no other questions. Anybody else have any other questions? Is there anything else that the trustees want to bring up? I know there might have been a question about a printer that could not have been put in the capital because it was under 10 grand.
Right. We were in need of an office printer. And so the question was just where, where do those in-between costs come when a department has them? If it's not $10,000 to qualify for the capital plan, but it's well beyond what you have in your appropriated budget for any given year?
I can answer.
Like I say, do you have?
I can answer that. I did reach out to Tim Graybar and he said that we could make it as part. I think you gave me the number of 3,000 or 4,000.
Yeah, it's like 54. Because then the other piece related to our budget is that, you know, we, you don't actually want to ask for it as a budget increase even for next year because then it bumps up your budget and then you have to stay there. I mean, this is really a one-time expense. It's really more of a capital expense even if it doesn't qualify for the plan. And the state allows for that where you report it differently. So the expectation is not that, you know, your budget bumps up by that, the price of that copier and then you have to be at that level. It would really be, it'd get paid for in a different way.
Can you, does Maureen have that information?
I have shared it, but we can follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you.
We took it off the capital plan because it was at the capital plan for $10,000. We took it off when she realized it was going to be significantly less.
Right, it was less.
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Historical Commission?
Yeah, that's number 691. 691.
Thank you. Okay.
Yep, this one. Yep. Okay, I guess Historical Commission. Maybe what we should do is since we have at least one, and I know Darren's only been around for a while. We don't answer the fave. I don't know if you want to introduce yourself.
Joan Morton. She's the co-chair.
How you doing? Okay.
We don't have a quorum and we're not posting.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. This is Historical Commission, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I don't think we have to get too excited about this one. It's only $500. Does anybody have any questions for the Historical Commission?
We also oversee the Historic Townhouse account, which is a little bit more money, like five times as much money.
The which one?
Historic Townhouse account, which has to do with the building.
We're going to talk about that too, right?
Those are the only two that we do.
Yep. Okay. So is that a separate?
It's probably under Cultural.
Is that a separate budget? So one second, I'll go back to that front page here. 191, thank you.
191 under General Government.
So in 2020's budget that we're in, it was $4,500. And now the budget being requested is $650. Couple of questions, I guess, that I believe that we have the roof already funded, right? And we have to get that out to bid, I would assume, you know?
It's under the building inspectors.
Yep. Okay. So that's all set. Is there any other expenses that are needed for?
Part of that, a roof repair replacement is the fact that we also need the chimney.
Repointed.
It's going to be repointed, but it's also got to be vented and closed so that it's not accessible.
Okay.
And that chimney only runs, it doesn't run from the ground. It runs from the second floor, which is really the peaked roof part of the building with the windows, second floor windows are. So it runs from there up to the above of the roof line. So that has to be taken care of because it has a leaking issue.
Okay.
So that will be done, I believe, before the roof is done.
Okay. Do we have money for that?
Yes.
Okay.
We have money for that.
Okay. Is there anything else?
No, we're going to be doing some work on the honor roll, updating that, the World War II honor roll forward. We're going to be working on that. The only thing that we do have is if you look at the patio that is surrounded by the granite fence to the, that faces Bedford Street and Precinct Street, we had an opening made so that people could use the pedestrian walkway that the state put in. But unfortunately, it stops about 20 feet from there and it's just bumpy grass. And we were trying to find out, who do we see? We talked to the Highway Department just to see whether or not he knew what we could do, but he didn't feel that it was something that his department would be able to fix, which would probably mean that we need to have it go down a few inches and then have it black topped or cemented or something like that from there to the actual egress to the patio.
Which will make the handicap accessible.
Yeah, which is the issue. A pedestrian walkway would be great. Pedestrians can use it, but anybody in a wheelchair or who has a mobility issue would have difficulty because it's very uneven.
Okay.
So that is, we're going to have to come to the Selectmen at some point in time to find out how we go about getting that taken care of.
Okay. One of the things that we're trying to do is that look at all town buildings and determine, get a master list of things that need to be done. And so Nate Darling is going to be doing that. So this would be a good example of one that could be added to the list. And then we'll have to prioritize, you know, what gets done, what doesn't get done. So if you can, when you get a chance, see Nate and so we can get this list to going, you know, for this particular building now.
We've had dialogue on it, but we were just waiting to see. You know, it was one of those things where there were some other things that were more important to get done physically to the building and structure.
Well, we're actually, you know, instead of just having dialogue and conversation, we're trying to get something documented, you know, not, and that's nothing to do with you, just in general, so we know what needs to be done and what we have to fund. And that way there, we could say, oh, you know, we got $100,000 worth of projects that we need to do. What can we do and what we can't do? Okay? That's all.
Rich, can I add on to that?
Sure.
Just the conversations we've had. And it's not just about repairs that need doing now. We want to, we want to go into the future and start looking about things that need doing, you know, if you know in about five years you're going to need a repair, we're going to want to know that. And that way we can kind of plan out a little ahead and get a little ahead of it on times where we have the money to expend or we can make those things happen.
We've had a long-range plan ongoing and things got taken care of. Like the old steamroller barn got a new roof and it got all kinds of wood repairs. That was a really crucial thing. And the town privies are fine now, but that's been taken care of. So we've been slowly moving through these projects.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. There's two other things that have been funded and I don't know if this comes under the Historical Commission or not. I think it does. But Historical National Register listing and preservation, is that, okay? Is that something we're going to be working on this coming year?
The preservation thing, we have to make our survey comprehensive in terms of what Mass Historical Commission calls comprehensive. So we are in the process of trying to get someone who can give us a price on finishing, making our inventory of historic sites, buildings, places comprehensive. And then we can go ahead with the second element that was funded, which was to have Thompson Hill put on the National Historic Register.
Okay.
To have Thompson Hill Cemetery.
Okay. The next one after that is this, part of that is the historic?
And the historic district.
Asset surveys, 25,000?
Yeah. They were in, they were in a reverse order.
Oh.
The survey has to come first before we can do the other two projects.
Okay.
So one of the things we're really concerned about is that we would like to see Thompson Hill placed on the National Historic Register, but because they have a vinyl fence and because of the restrictions of the laws in Massachusetts which govern or protect cemeteries, that needs to be replaced before we'll be able to do any kind of work with that acknowledgement of that site.
Okay.
So we support the Historical Commission, supports the Cemetery Commission and their ongoing project.
Any questions?
Was the fence actually replaced with something more period correct or?
It was a granite and iron strips, some fencing, and it should have never been removed.
Oh, okay.
It was against the law to remove it.
It'd be better.
So it needs to be replaced. It needs to be replaced. And so it's important for us to have, the designation is really important. And now we have the Veterans Cemetery, which is also a part of that whole area. So it's, you know, it's two cemeteries, but Thompson Hill is the more globally founded. That's the one we want to really see. So it's a great distinction to the town. We only have one building on the National Historic Register and it's the Historic Townhouse. The building people call the Old Town Hall, but we don't have a new town hall. We have a new town office. And so anyways, it would be nice to have that on the, it's an area as opposed to a structure. And then we have the Royal Wampanoag Cemetery on 105 overlooking the ponds. So those are only two places in town that are on the National Historic Register.
Great. Thank you.
So with removing the fence altogether and not replacing it with the wrought iron and the granite, would that do it too? Or do you need to have the fence there?
It should really be restored because it's really in violation.
In violation?
I want to talk about that.
We're going to talk about that.
Cemetery Commission is more, understands more of what it is.
Weren't they looking for the granite last year? Do you know if they've been able, we can ask them, but I'm just curious if you know if they found any of it.
It's, the problem is, it's like, we have the paver, in front of the Historic Townhouse, we have that patio and we put in that, the Historical Commission paid for that because it was a safety issue if you were going to have any events, even though there was the[1790.69] Even though there was the difference that Mass dot allowed from the granite fencing that we, the garden club put in, they, there was enough room. It's just that if you had children playing, it would be just, or if you had cars that, I guess there was an accident there just the other night. So I mean, there's all that sort of stuff going on. But because the building was already on the National Historic Register, we didn't have a problem adding that. But in order to get on the National Historic Register, you have to come under tighter requirements. And so that's a concern for, that we're concerned about, the Commission is. All right. Thank you.
This is Cemetery, which?
Public Works.
Thank you.
Right behind the highway.
Second row page. Actually passed it, it's tiny. There it is. Oh, yeah, it's a, it's, one more.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Oh, is there something you wanted to?
Exhibit A.
Joan, is this something you wanted to mention, or? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's in, it's a.
Public Works, right?
Yeah. It's tiny, though.
Oh, it's very nice.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, the Board of Selectmen. The Town Administrator. The Finance Committee.
Did you call me to?
I'm sorry? Okay, call me, you know?
And one more thing, can everybody, I, we met Joan now, we know you can.
No, I'm going to discuss that.
No, no, just tell us who, what your name is.
Okay, it's on there. But I'm going to discuss, I want to give you a salutation first.
Sure.
Town Administrator, Supporting Staff. My name is Ken Uppel. I'm the Chairman of Cemetery Commission, Fred Beal, and Joan Moore. And I'm very, very happy, Joan, that I don't have to stand up for thirty minutes.
That's right. We cut that down. No flip charts.
No flip chart.
This is good.
This is great. Okay, this is an information briefing, and its purpose is to provide to the Town Selectmen and to the Finance Committee a report of the accomplishments of the Cemetery Commission for the year 2019, and its goals for the year 2020, with the support of funds to be approved in the forthcoming budget. Accomplishments for 2019 were Award Cemetery, 45 Crooked Lane, replaced missing gate, replaced seventy-five feet of broken and missing wooden fence rails and posts. Robage Cemetery, 62 Kenyon Avenue, replaced and straightened sixty feet of bent and missing steel rails and granite posts. Haskins Cemetery, Southwest Street, replaced missing thirty-four feet of steel rods and granite posts. McCully Cemetery, Highland Road, replaced twenty feet of steel, by the way, that's a typo, I did it wrong, I think. It's Highland Road, not Avenue. Replaced twenty feet of steel rods and three granite posts. Thompson Hill Cemetery, 185 Rhode Island Road, recovered with the consent of the Lakeville Lions Club. I know you're going to ask me about this one. The original eleven granite posts and rails installed previously at Thompson Hill Cemetery. Precinct Cemetery, 185 Rhode Island Road, cut bushes and trees for the construction of 100 grave cremation burial site. Kind of Lakeville has no cremation site whatsoever, so we're in the process of creating one. Burials, we coordinated and tenet eight burials. You might, this is from the old business we had last year. We opened Thompson Hill in July of this past year, 2019. And I showed you that, we had it surveyed, we had infrared surveyed, so we weren't going to be going into anyone's grave spaces. So we have now four burials in there since I presented my last meeting. So Thompson Hill Priority, Historical Commission discussed this with you very briefly. I might like to go into a little bit more deeply. And that is, as reported earlier, original posts and rails were recovered from the Lakeville Lions Club and installed at Thompson Hill Cemetery, making a partial divider, this is only a partial divider, from the Precinct Cemetery. I would like you to look at that photo. So we ended up in the middle, basically. But the Commission has appropriated budget funds of our own budget, two thousand nine eighty-one dollars to purchase and install eighteen vintage posts and rails to complete the divider toward Island Road. When I'm speaking of vintage, it has to be within the seventeen, eighteen-hundred era. It can't be new posts. It has to be hand-cut posts. And some of you are aware of what hand-cut posts were. So it has to be similar to that, and it has to be to the specifications that are required within a state or the National Register per se. So the town, you all, last year by capital expenditure paid ten thousand dollars. Historical Commission didn't tell you that. But you paid ten thousand dollars last year to have the Seventeen-Eleven Cemetery, which is Thompson Hill, Seventeen-Eleven is our oldest cemetery here, to be placed on a National Register. So that money is going to now say, okay, we're going to go on the National Register, so we're going to pay you to put on that. But they have inspections, and they come and inspect everything. We already know what they're going to inspect. They're going to inspect the posts, and they're going to inspect the rails, and they have to meet specifications. So to be approved by the National Register and be on that number one, we have to replace all that plastic fencing. If you look at the next photo, that plastic rail has to be replaced. So I know you're going to ask me sometime today or in the future, we're going to do all the plastic fencing we purchased. We have an idea for that. We're going to put it on the part of Precinct Cemetery that doesn't have a separation boundary between the homes in La Barran Galco. So we're going to reuse it. We're not going to discard it, we're not going to throw it away, we're going to save it. So the Commission has found, this took at least six months to find this, a supplier in a possession of dainted vintage posts which would comply with the requirements on the National Register. And to complete the cemetery, we need fifty-eight granite posts and rails. They need to be purchased and installed. We have the supplier. So, here's the big one. You're going to say, oh my God. It is requested that a general fund expenditure of approximately thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars be approved and allocated to complete this project. So maybe it would be advantageous to discuss that in the Finance Committee, how to pay this. If we can't have it in a general fund this year, maybe we can purchase and allocate a certain portion this year to go into next year and purchase the remaining portion, so we don't have a big hit at one time. That's up to you. I'm not involved in that, I'm just making a suggestion, instead of taking it all at one time. I can hold the post to another year, that would be acceptable to the supplier. And we would, as a Commission, accept that too. So the Cemetery Commission requests this budget for the calendar year 2020 run remain at thirteen thousand dollars. No additional requests remain on that. Respectfully submitted by the Cemetery Commission. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a question, Maureen. I don't see it on the capital expenditure.
I just get that app from them, from the capital expenditures. So, I mean, double check.
No, when was that? No, when was that? The capital expenditure, when was that money? That was the last year?
No, we, every year that we send out, and we have a capital expenditure. And I know Maureen, I believe, sent it out to all the boards and commissions and.
Okay, this was the information given to me by the Historical Commission?
Maybe, I don't know.
So if I'm wrong.
So historical disaster. There's been significant ones, but I didn't get anything from the cemetery.
So is it in your minutes sales approved?
Once it was approved by the National Register, by the Historical Commission, then you decided to do the research for what we needed to do.
And then you found out about that.
Then we found out, once it was approved to go forward, then we realized what we had to do to get the posts and rods.
So would you like to add it on to the capital expenditure?
Well, you should have, at least have it on there so we can consider it. And we haven't got to the capital, you know, plan yet.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, that's where we come from, so I would say.
You know that word, assume, you know what that means, so we're not going to break that far.
But Joan, while we're on this, what is the thirty thousand dollars for the survey and preservation in the capital plan there, see it?
Well, that's a map for the town, marking where all the archaeological sites in town is.
Okay, so that's different than what we talked about.
That's different, yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll consider that and take a look at it, but we're not prepared to discuss that capital plan tonight, so.
Appreciate it.
And the thirty-eight thousand five hundred is for the rods, the posts, and the installation.
So it's a complete project.
It's a complete job.
Okay.
I'll add that in and send out the new.
All right.
Mr. Uppel, what would be the, would it be an option not to have the fencing at all? And if we did that, could we get it into the National Historic Registry without the fencing?
No.
So you need the fencing there?
See, I'm going back eighteen years.
Sir.
And so, and you're probably aware of it. Someone along the line, I don't know whom, but decided that the posts and the rails were not conducive to a new society that we have. So they gave everything away, on the posts and rails. So I've been looking, and we have been looking, for a number of years, where these things went to. And I can tell you where some of them are. Some of the, and Joan, you know it, some of these are curvings. So they took the post and made curvings for it. The rods they just threw away. Or someone got the rods and put them into a foundry. So it was a sad thing, because they didn't realize the importance of keeping that into a natural and original state. So what we're trying to do now is put it back into where it was. And it's difficult. Because it costs money now. We should have left it where it was.
Okay.
One general question, probably not sure if it's prudent tonight, but given the location of that cemetery, the Route 79 project going through there, would these be placed, if that went forward, would the posts and rails be placed so that they wouldn't be impacted if that project ended up going through? Is that a concern we have to worry about?
Well, that would be looked at, Brian. I don't think it's a concern where they are in the road layout.
No.
I forget how far off the road they are.
Yeah, if you look at, I think it's number, I forgot, it's number two, I think, on your photographs.
Yep.
That's showing the front of the cemetery. I was going to give it the whole length of it, along with the highway there. But it's already laid out, and they have markers in from a surveyor that are already there.
Oh, are they already?
So it has to be exactly where that fence is now.
Okay, this is tough to tell from the photo, because it looks like.
So to alleviate concern, that would be a definite issue that we have to address, which we already have.
All right, excellent.
Well, thank you.
I know that the Highway Department now, you know, cuts all the cemeteries, which I know you're probably very happy about.
Yes, I don't want to do it.
Well, we used to have outside services and so forth, so, any issues with that? Are you okay?
No, they've been, in fact, my annual report that I submit for the last fifteen years is showing that the Highway Department has support of us a hundred percent.
Okay.
They're great.
Thank you. I guess we're all set. Anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. You'll buy yourself?
All by myself, yes. Were you going to trust it to me or didn't want to come out on a Monday night? I'm going to go with didn't want to come out on a Monday night, so.
John Oliveri, Chairman.
Chairman of the Board of Assessors. Would you like me to?
Sure.
Present, or, I mean, I can probably just let Leah take care of it, since she was a former assessor.
No, that's okay, you can do it.
In general, our.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
I do it my own part of the business, but Ocean Church.
I don't need to open or close a meeting, because it's just me.
It's just you.
I'm all by my lonesome here. In general, all of our line items in our budget are down this year, other than contracted assessment services, which contractually, it goes up two point seven percent. Since we've moved back into the Town Hall, our costs really have been very steady. And because of that, we've adjusted a number of different supply line items and whatnot, and brought those down to a more reasonable number. At the end of the day, we're looking at a total reduction of five point two seven percent. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. We don't get that very often.
You don't get that very often. I can't promise every single year, impertuitely.
Oh, no, no, now we expect it.
It won't stay, George, we get constant living.
Going forward.
I think we're running out of things to cut here.
I know on our agenda, we have a contract that needs to be approved for GIS, I think it is.
Correct.
Right? So why don't we do that, so, you can do that. But I have a question, Joan. In the money, previous appropriations that have been funded, there was some funding in here for GIS. Is that yours?
The fourteen thousand inch?
Where are we at? Oh, no, twenty-five hundred. Not fourteen. No, you know anything about that, I gather. No, you don't see that in yours.
Okay.
It's a separate list. It was appropriated in the past.
From the capital?
Yeah. Okay, well, if you, if you don't need it, we're going to close it out, because there's no reason to keep it there.
No, if it's not on my, if it's not in my budget,
Okay.
you can close it out at this point.
All righty.
Okay, so as Agenda Item Number Two, which we'll take out of order because you're here, we would like to discuss the tax maintenance proposal, which I think you guys voted on, correct?
We did. We voted on unanimously in favor of, basically, it's cleaning up some errors that had been done in the gas information that wasn't entered from a mapping standpoint. That wasn't the obligation of our GIS service provider, so, but we are going to have them update everything so it's where it needs to be and all of our information is accurate.
Okay, it was just basically cleanup, maybe like a time lag too, or something, from when we had started this originally to when we actually, correct, is that what it was?
Yeah, and even prior to, some information wasn't being uploaded or upgraded the way it should have been, so.
Okay, but it's not like a new scope of work or anything like that?
No, it's cleanup stuff, and once this gets cleaned up, as long as, we're assuming everything gets entered correctly, we should be in good shape going forward.
Okay, so what we have here is the scope of work list that cost thirty-two hundred dollars for processing data recorded 1120 through 123120. If property record cards, including building sketches are provided, there's an additional fifteen dollar per building added or change fee. And speaking with Harold, he said that he will not be doing the property record cards. So we have the whole contract here, but, so the Board of Assessors have requested that the Board of Selectmen award and sign a contract with Cartographic Associates doing business SCAI technologies for tax map maintenance scope of work. So I'll entertain a motion to award and enter into a contract with Cartographic Associates Incorporated doing business SCAI technologies for tax map maintenance from 1120 to 123120 for a fee of three thousand two hundred dollars, and to authorize the Town Administrator, Maureen Candido, to sign the contract.
I'll second that with discussion. Where does the thirty-two hundred come out of? Is that, was that in the budget already?
Our budget.
It was in, it was already in the budget?
It was not in the budget, but we can handle it.
You have, you have enough money to do it. Okay, perfect.
All set? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. There's one other thing that I'd like to mention while Joan is here. Joan and I and Maureen, you know, had a discussion about the overlay account and setting aside overlay reserve. In the past couple of years, the town hasn't sent any money aside, they've used some surplus that has been available. They've used some surplus that has been available, and we agree, I believe, John, that we should set aside the overlay reserve for going forward in fiscal twenty-one, and then we'll transfer out some reserve out of the surplus. And the reason why we want to do that is so that, because at some point in the next couple of years, as it goes down, there's not going to be money available in the surplus account. So we're recommending one hundred and fifty-five thousand to put into the overlay reserve account. And for those who don't know what the overlay, I should explain that. What the overlay reserve is, is to set aside for tax abatements from primarily elderly, veterans, you know.
Yeah, most of it is statutory. There are very few, I mean, we've had fewer abatements going over the past few years. I think, not that anybody likes to pay taxes, but because we've done a good job at making sure the values have been fair and equitable for all involved. So those are coming down to the point where most of our abatements are statutory.
So we looked at the, I think it was a five-year average, the town account looked at, and it was about, it was one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So that's what's being recommended. I'm going to go over the revenue sheet later, after we go through the budgets, but I'd also, you know, in that discussion, we were trying to come up with a percentage, you know, to take out of that surplus account, you know, every year, John, but for this particular year, you know, we're going to want to take thirty thousand for the vision software that you want to buy. And then another hundred thousand, so we would ask the Board of Assessors to vote that at the next meeting, please.
Okay, a hundred thousand and?
Hundred and thirty altogether.
Hundred and thirty. Yeah. I will bring it before the board, and we will.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions?
Yep, certainly in that discussion, the amount in an overlay should reflect the expected amount needed to cover the abatement and exemption costs for the entire year. The average is one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Now, if you wanted to have a two-year balance, it would be three-ten. Would be what you'd carry in that account as of the end of the year. Right now, there's three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in there. So why would you add any amount to it?
Because.
Like a bad debt reserve is that you put in the abatement per the state should be, reflect the amount needed to cover abatement. And that's what's in that account, is the abatement and the exemptions, not money to be put in to be taken out for other items. If there's a budget item, it should be a budget item. If it's a capital, it should be a capital item. Certainly, it can be transferred into a surplus account and then taken out, but you're only supposed to put in there the balance that you expect to use for the year.
Which is one hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Which is one hundred and fifty-five, and there's three eighty-eight in there now.
Right, but the year that we're in right now, it's not finished yet.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
And if we don't do this, then in a couple of years, we're going to get burned. Because what we're trying to do is have sustainable budgets here, along with revenues. And if we don't do this now, and let's say two years from now, we say, oh, we used up all of the overlay surplus, that one hundred and fifty-five thousand is going to have to come from other parts of the budget, and we don't want to do that.
Next year, you would put money in the overlay account.
I know, but it's going to continue to go down, and then of course.
It would go down by one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, at least historically, that's what it would go down on. The state tells you, only put in there, reflect, if you read the State Assessor six point nine, the overlay surplus, and the definition of that, and what belongs in there is one hundred and fifty-five thousand. If you want to have a two-year reserve, you could stretch it to three-ten. But to, you already have three-eighty in there, you shouldn't be adding to it. And if you have budget items that you need, you certainly should be asking for those.
Can I say something? Do you have, I do know, when I was on the Board of Assessors, we had potential commercial cases that sometimes do and sometimes don't go before the appellate tax court, in which case, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars wouldn't be enough anyways. Is that still a possibility? I do know one of the bigger commercial properties just got sold again in town, which puts a really, we don't have other comparables, so it really puts a hard job on the assessors to make sure that they're assessing so properly, which is hard to do when you don't have a whole lot to compare it to. So I just want to be sure that there's enough in there. If one of those bigger companies comes to us and says, we don't like our valuation, we.
Yeah, we don't have any potential large abatement exposures.
Right now.
At this point that we know of, or nothing in the foreseeable, or the foreseeable future. I, you know, John's talking about, two times, I believe that Harald and, yeah, Harald and Todd had also discussed using a number of like four hundred as to what the.
And when I responded to that, I said, we should do a sustainable number based on actual that's coming in as the years grow, so it should be two times what the average is. And that way, when the average goes up, the reserve goes up accordingly, just to keep it.
Right, the two times average brings you to three-ten. If they want it to be four hundred and you get three-eighty-eight, you should add twelve thousand, not one fifty something.
Let's look at where we are.
Yeah, no, I got, let me ask you.
Well, you, right, you brought it up, so where you are is at three-eighty-eight.
I'm going to explain it to.
What number, I mean, obviously, to your point, Rich, I mean, we want to be sustainable. We don't want to run into, we don't do anything, next thing you know, we have fifty thousand dollars in there. What number would you feel comfortable for us?
Three hundred. So let me explain. We have three-eighty-eight, according to John. We're going to add one fifty. Okay, which is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We're going to take out one thirty, which is four sixty. So if we put in one fifty for twenty-twenty-one, then we're going to have one fifty for twenty-twenty-one, which would leave three hundred and ten thousand dollars, is what we want to be. Right?
But why are we taking out one fifty? I mean, you're saying we're taking it out, why are we taking it out? There should be budget items for the one fifty.
Thirty, I know thirty of that is going to be designated for the upgrade of vision, which needs to be done. I mean, for those who don't realize, vision system is basically, they're doing what a lot of management systems do. They're saying, we're not going to support this one anymore, so what's our option? You've got to upgrade to our next one. And we did go out, talk to the other providers in that arena, and it actually cost us more to switch. We don't like the fact that they're forcing us to do it, but we really don't have any options, so that's where that thirty's from.
So is that in the capital budget, a thirty?
It is not in the capital budget.
Okay. And my insinuation would be, it would be in the capital budget.
Oh, we're taking thirty, we're taking the thirty of the overlay to offset the cost of that vision.
Well, that obviously is a town meeting vote, but, so that's thirty, so what's the other hundred?
That's what thirty is designated for, yeah.
Right.
I, I know that thirty's, I know what that thirty's for, that's it.
You're at three-eighty-eight now. If the assessors want four hundred, you'd be adding twelve. If you're taking out thirty, you could technically be adding twelve plus thirty, and that would be what you'd put in. I mean, the state tells you to put in one year. You want to put in two, I wouldn't object to two.
But if we put in one year, it's one fifty, one fifty-five.
Right, but it's three-eighty, and it's over two years in there today. We're not supposed to be using it to take items out. We're supposed to be, the overlay is only to cover abatements and exemptions, not to be taken out to be used by other items. It's not a, it's not a free cash account.
That's not true. Once they declare it surplus, then it can be taken out.
Oh, absolutely, but you shouldn't be putting stuff in that you automatically think you're going to be taken out. That's not what it's for.
My goal here is.
It's not a school E and D account. But the thirty, I don't object to the thirty. And I don't, I don't object to the twelve, so you'd be putting in twelve plus thirty. You'd be putting in forty-two. And that gives you, that gives you a balance of four hundred thousand at the end of this year. That's a two-point-something-year expected usage. That's what, go read six point zero and six point one in the state Mass Gov.
But, John, would it be fair to say that if there's no money going in right now, we're not in alignment with what the state recommends, so?
No, the state recommends that you have one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in there at the end of this year, one year. And we have three-eighty-eight.
But if we're not putting any more in, regardless of.
Well, we don't need, we didn't put any in there in the last two years, because it was nine hundred thousand.
So in my mind, I think that's kind of not what the state is hoping. They would hope that you'd maintain that in the budget so that if there is an off-year, you've got the money in there.
The one fifty, the three-eighty-eight should take care of an off-year, an entire off-year, normal plus one year and a quarter.
But if we don't budget the one fifty-five.
You don't need to budget.
But if we don't budget that now, that then theoretically becomes available to go elsewhere in the budget, and now how do we claw it back if we need to later?
You can spend it on other items. We didn't do it the last two years. You didn't need to add to it. It was, it was a fund that the balance needed to be drawn down. It still could be drawn down. If you want to add twelve thousand dollars to it, that's what the assessors said, a two-year cycle is four hundred thousand dollars, even though, even though the average is three-ten. So you don't need more than three-ten. Four hundred is a stretch, but I certainly wouldn't object to that. You don't, you don't add items and take it out. You're only supposed to be adding in there for the abatements and exemptions, that's it. It's not a, it's not a slush fund to put money in and take it out for other projects. And you have two years in it, you have over two years.
Harold recommends it, and Todd recommends that we do this.
No, they recommend three-eighty, they recommend four hundred thousand.
They recommend that we set an overlay aside in each budget going forward, and then if there's surplus in there, then we'll take the surplus out.
And do what with it?
Spend it on whatever we want, but not necessarily.
The state tells you to put in there, read six point one in the state.
I'm familiar with it.
Right. What does it tell you to do?
Tells you to put it in, but you can also take it out when it's not used. And that's what we're doing.
Which the assessors do want to see here.
You only put in what you expect for abatements and exemptions. If that's wrong, you take it out. You're using it for capital items or other items. What's a hundred thousand for?
We haven't decided yet what we're going to do with that hundred thousand. It could be for capital, you know, whatever.
Okay, I think we should try to move on.
Okay. All right, John, thanks.
You're welcome.
You took care of the other thing too, so that paperwork should be done for you soon.
I made it during myself, so you take this with you, and make our vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. General Government, one forty-five. Treasury Collector.
Treasury? Treasury.
Hi, Debbie. How are you? Good, how are you?
I think everybody knows Debbie Kenny, and she's the one who pays your taxes to.
I'm easy, I'm easy here. No big, big ticket items, I'm very, nothing big to show. My debit went down, my computer services went down because I no longer pay for the software vendor for payroll, it's gone up to human services. No raises are really in here, only step increases, so I don't know if it'll go up if the raises, everything's finalized.
That's all right, I can explain to you.
Oh, okay, so I really don't, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, we want to talk about the debt schedules. Anybody have any questions on the debt schedule? Which is way back in the, right there.
Where are you?
Department, seven-ten, way in the back. Green tab.
I'm blind in green.
So as you can see, the debt overall has been going down, except, of course, we just added the police station, you know, onto that. You can see it all broken out by, by different projects in the years, so. Now, you can, have any questions now? If not, you can certainly talk to Debbie or Maureen.
I find it hard to believe that I've been here this long that I've actually seen some of this been paid off. It's kind of scary.
Right, we've not funded any capital beyond the police station in the last several years. It's been, the capital has only come out of free cash.
Yeah.
So that, obviously, the debt would have gone down by another four hundred and forty thousand dollars, so most everything is paid off in the next three or four years.
Yeah, I know.
Except for the police station.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Keep all the way out, guys. It's okay, Maureen.
I'm good.
All right.
You all done with me?
Yeah.
Awesome. I can go put my pajamas on now.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
You too, nice.
Do we have to wait till seven forty? Do we have to?
No, I don't think so.
What's this guy?
Okay. County Park Commission, all right. How's that, Mike, you in?
Scott. Scott. Scott.
Oh, sorry, wrong guy. Scott, are you in? Are you the only one coming?
Yes, as far as I know. Yeah, so I'm the only one coming.
Last year's park.
No, I get it.
It's under Enterprise Fund.
Okay, let's talk about the revenue first, I guess.
Sure.
It's the second page, it'll be underneath there. Well, first one's a landfill.
That one.
Okay. Season passes. When is, when is Clearpawn open from two?
Usually opens the weekend the kids get out of school.
So it's the middle of June?
So it's towards the end of June.
Towards the end of June.
You know, it could be anywhere from the twentieth to the twenty-eighth. If the weather's looking good, we might open up the weekend before, just for the weekend. It all depends. And then we're closed before, before they go back to school, usually the next to last weekend, August.
Okay. You're increasing the, the season passes to thirteen thousand three fifty, okay? So right now, we got sixty-two hundred dollars in, right, according to your sheet here, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
The bulk of the season passes coming in the first week, which is in this fiscal year.
So between that, between now and then, you're going to generate another five thousand dollars in season passes?
Not now. From June twentieth to the end of the month, we get the most, that's when we get the bulk of the passes.
Okay. They seem to be a little bit all over the place, ups and downs and whatever. The concession stand, you're budgeting fourteen thousand, you budgeted ninety-eight hundred, right? In fiscal twenty.
Yep.
And you only brought in fifty-two hundred dollars. And if it doesn't open till the last week in June, how are you going to make up six? I'm assuming not six.
That's a good question.
Forty-six hundred.
Part of the reason for the increase in the overall amount was better accounting. In the past, some of the revenues were used to purchase. In the past, some of the revenues were used to purchase more goods. Unbeknownst to me. And we're hoping for a better accounting of all that.
That's a pretty big jump, though, from ninety-eight hundred to fourteen thousand.
It is.
I don't know how you justify it then. This is, if now, right now.
I understand what you're saying.
Your budget is ninety-eight hundred, and you've only taken in fifty-two hundred, and you only have one week left to collect the difference between ninety-eight and fifty-two. And now you're asking for fourteen.
Well, no, but this is for twenty-twenty-one.
No, I understand that.
Right, right.
But how's it go from ninety-eight to fourteen when we've only taken in fifty-two hundred dollars in fiscal twenty?
It was, it was, more was done. At the time, it was taken and looked back. Fiscal nineteen was eleven thousand, five hundred. To my surprise, the amount of cash that was used totals into five thousand dollars.
I don't know what that means, but.
So basically, they took five thousand dollars from sales.
To buy more product.
So it never hit the books?
So it never, it never hit the income number. So with better accounting that we are very much planning on this year. I'm anticipating.
So they added two thousand onto their food service supplies.
Correct.
If you look in the food service supplies line, they added two thousand on there because it's going to come out of the food service line. Whereas in previously, it was coming as a net loss on the concession line. So if they had eleven thousand in sales, they were only reporting nine thousand because they were using two thousand for product. So it's a, still a change?
It was, it was more than that for, as, as, as I delve into this and get more information, it was closer to three thousand dollars. For food service, a thousand dollars for park activities. And another four hundred and six hundred for supplies. So there's, there's approximately, I, I, you're shaking your head?
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't know. Anybody else have any questions about that?
I'm not saying it's right. That's what I'm finding is what happened.
I know, but still going from ninety-eight hundred to fourteen thousand is a lot.
Well, but there's, there's close to six thousand, but there's fifty-three hundred dollars in cash that really should have been added to last year's number.
So you're saying actually that ten thousand, five hundred?
Right. The expense side was understated. He was using the cash out of the concession.
Correct.
But where is the expense showing up?
It's on, on the previous page, right above it. Right above.
Right, and you don't.
Expense went from one twenty-four to one thirty-three.
See it because of the way the chart of accounts is set up here. You don't see it. It's, we only have one line item. That's the way it always was, was it was one line item for repairs and maintenance, one line item for supplies. Whether it was the park, John Pond, or here. So that's why I'm trying to work with the accountant to get a better accounting and to split out our chart of accounts. So we have the three cost centers, so we can identify exactly where these things are and where these costs are coming from.
So the concession has always been net? It's been, it's been revenue minus the expense of buying the food? Has it always been that way? So for, like, for the year twenty-nineteen, we had eleven thousand, five hundred?
I don't think it was as much.
Right.
I'm, I'm finding, I think this year was more than it has been in the past. There was always a small amount that was done. And when Nellie and I dug into this to find out that it was to the tune of fifty-six hundred dollars, I wasn't very pleased.
So who did the books? Like, who, who did this? You said you're just finding it out. Who, who did it before you?
What do you mean, who did it? I mean, it was.
Well, you said you're just, you're just finding it out.
I can probably guess that if they ran out of something, they said, here, go down to the corner store and here's some cash and bring back a receipt or, or not.
Right. And sometimes we didn't get the receipts. And now Nellie's, where's the receipts? How come you're saying, you know, you sold ten passes and you're giving me. Oh, we took that money and here's the receipt. All of a sudden, these receipts are, are flying out of the woodwork.
Right, right.
So that's why, you know, we've been talking, trying to tighten up the cash. So that they don't use the cash to go buy supplies. They use a credit card or they use.
Right. And we don't take credit card for payment there either, correct?
We don't at present. We don't have that.
We're talking about, we're talking about the concession stand here.
Yeah, no, I know, but I mean, you know.
Going to be difficult to take.
Right.
I mean, Johnny's gonna come up with a dollar for a bag of Jacks.
Right. But sometimes when the parents come up.
Oh, no, no.
And they get stuff for four or five kids or whatever, might, and you can keep better tabs of the money that way.
Hopefully, we're gonna try really hard to institute better policies.
It's not easy.
Not when you're dealing with cash.
Okay. Gate fees. You had twenty-eight thousand. You budgeted twenty-eight thousand for twenty, and you've taken in fifteen.
Again, probably sixty to seventy percent of the, I'm sorry, that's the gate fees. It's historically, the beginning of the season is the busiest part, is the busiest time.
Yeah, but it's only open one week before July one.
Possibly two weeks. All depends on the date that we're open.
Okay, two weeks. You got fifteen thousand right now. And it's closed. It's gonna be open the last two weeks in June. How are you gonna get to twenty-eight thousand? I'm just asking a question.
I'm just going on historical data, taking the average over the last few years.
But then the question would be, why is twenty only fifteen thousand? And not twenty-eight?
It's actually more than that. Again.
These are your numbers.
I, I know. Part of the gate fees were used to buy, it was, it was a combination of gate fees, concession stand money. That was used to buy product for the snack stand.
Okay. It doesn't add up between the two. You talk about food services, you're going in the wrong place. Talking about receipts, not going in the right place now for both the season passes and the gate receipts.
Yeah.
So between those two items, you're talking twenty-eight, you're talking forty thousand dollars. And we're only taking in twenty-one. That's a big delta. I'm just pointing it out.
I'm going on budget on historical data. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the last four years. And using, I understand this year may be down, or nineteen may have been down, or twenty, whatever, whatever period we're talking about. But in two thousand nineteen, we had twenty-six thousand, five hundred. Two thousand eighteen, we had twenty-nine thousand, three hundred. I'm looking at historical data, not just the last, not just this one year to make a budget.
All I, all I wanna know is, was that money, if it went in the wrong place? Is it in the wrong place?
It's a combination of the three items. The money was taken from.
What three items?
Seasons passes, concession stand, and gate fees.
Okay. So if you take all of those three and you add those three up based upon your budget, they're not close. Right?
They're down, yeah. I, I. I, I don't know what to tell you. They're down. And, and there's about five thousand dollars in cash that would be added to that. That should be added to that. That they used to buy product, which doesn't appear anywhere here.
I hope, I hope it appears somewhere.
Well, but you, but you're not gonna see it. It never got deposited. A check was never written. All there are, all we have is receipts that they went out and purchased things.
What account was that taken out of in expenses?
Taken out of, it wasn't taken out of any account. It was never put into an account.
It never went in, so it never came out.
That came in, they went down the street and bought product and handed a receipt.
It never hit a bank.
Anybody else got any questions on that?
It's clearly, Rich, it's clearly a problem, and maybe we need to, like, spend some time on that. But for tonight's purposes, I think we can assume that it's a problem.
This is important because.
Yeah, no, it is important.
These, these numbers here. And if the numbers aren't attainable, then we're gonna have a budget problem.
I mean, I, you know, I definitely can, can get on board with the concession stand, the, the, the cash issue there. The one that, you know, is kind of, is the gate fees, the twenty-eight. I mean, it looks like in, in two thousand nineteen, it was at twenty-six. In two thousand eighteen, it was at twenty-nine. But of course, we don't know when those were attained, if it was the last two weeks of June. Or if it, the, the season before had been busier. So it's kinda hard for us to tell right there, but.
Because these cross into two years.
Right.
You know?
But I, I mean, I do agree that.
They don't cross into two years. It runs from July one to June thirtieth.
Yeah, fifteen to twenty-eight, that's a huge.
Two seasons.
Two seasons, thank you.
That's a huge fifteen to twenty-eight. That's a, that's, that's a big, that's a huge hope to get there.
Generally speaking, as we look backwards, though, their records kept to say, here are the number of days during the season that the pond was open and available to use. Here's the number of tendies, because maybe there was a month in here where it was closed due to weather or other circumstances.
This past year was one week less. This past season was one week less than the year before. The year before was ten weeks. This week was only nine. Because of the days when the kids get out of school and when they went back to school.
Yeah, plus it was closed for.
Plus we lost.
Yeah.
Because of triple E and because of just, was it two-day closure?
Yeah, for the bacteria.
I know triple E definitely affected people going to the pond this past year. It's something Mike and I had talked about.
And, and rain days. When we have rain days, the ponds close.
Um, wasn't it closed, closed, though, by the, the health officer for the high bacteria account?
Yeah.
That was just about two days.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't huge.
Last year was actually a pretty good year. But you certainly have, I think, three accounts to, to Rich's point. The gate, the gate fees don't look right. The concession, I get that. The hall rental isn't doing bad, but you would think that the bar rental would have had a similar ratio. And it seems to be the bar rentals down. And the food service is, is down. Not at the same ratio that is if the ninety-four thousand in the hall rental. And let's say you were half there, but you're at seventy-five, which isn't too bad. You, you do well. But the bar looks wrong, looks low.
It's better than last year.
Looks low.
It's better than last year.
And the food service. Kinda looks low.
Right. This, this is for six months, and we're coming into the busiest season.
Right.
For the, for the, for the launch.
Right. But your hall, your hall rentals aren't bad at the seventy-five.
Nope.
So you had a day, but the bar rentals and the food look, look a bit down. In relationship to your rental.
Yes, no, I, I, I agree.
Yeah. And the gate, and that, that needs to be, make sure that the food service is doing things appropriately. And if there's a hundred people there, the drinks look right, that kind of thing. And the gate fees are the other ones that look a little bit off. Uh, they, not a little bit, they're off, they're off.
I mean, the rental fee would take into consideration anyone that's put a deposit in too, and the event hasn't actually taken place yet, correct?
No, not at the present. It's held, it's held by SEN until the event happens now. Whereas in the past, the deposit would come in. So looking back, say, two years ago.
Yeah.
When the, the deposit would come in, it would be deposited and it would be included in rentals, even though the wedding might not be two years.
Certainly Claire Pond was busier, busier than it ever has been. And, and they do a good, a better job of collecting money. And the concession is finally running. And I think they're out a lot and it didn't get recorded properly.
Okay, I'm talking about the bar rental, the food services. And the management, you know, agreement. How much do we get paid of the food service?
Twenty percent of their take.
And how much do we get paid for the bar rental?
Eighteen percent.
The agreement says twenty.
And it's twenty percent.
But it is only eighteen. We're only getting credit for eighteen.
That was, that was the, the prior arrangement was eighteen. That's my mistake.
By who?
The prior one was eighteen, the current one is twenty. That's my mistake.
This is two thousand seventeen.
Correct. That's the prior, that's the current agreement.
Right. But we're not getting paid twenty percent on the bar. I looked at some of the receipts. Excuse me, it's the other way around. The bar's twenty, the food is eighteen. We're supposed to get twenty, right?
Now you've got me confused. I thought it was twenty.
Well, it says, it says twenty. This contract says twenty. So we're supposed to be getting twenty from this group, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're gonna owe us some money. Because they've only been paying eighteen.
How do you know that?
I looked at the forms that come in every month. It shows how much the, when you and I had sat down with Maureen, we looked at that stuff.
Yeah.
And it said eighteen percent on there, not twenty.
Okay.
So somebody needs to look at that, and we need to fix that.
Okay.
And I don't know how long this has been going on. Because, you know, the food dollars, I mean, is, you got here listed at. Thirty thousand dollars. So that means that the food alone, eighty percent on top of that. Is what, two-forty? So it's two-seventy, almost three hundred thousand dollars. So additional two percent on top of that, so.
Are they all eighteen percent?
I didn't look at every single one.
No, but I mean, are, are, what I'm saying for the food and the bar, you're saying they're both at eighteen percent?
No, the bar was at twenty and the food was at eighteen.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you can't help but. So two thousand sixteen's twenty-two thousand, two thousand seventeen's twenty-five, two thousand eighteen's twenty-six. And these are actual, two thousand nineteen is sixteen, almost seventeen. That's a nine thousand dollar difference.
Thousand dollar drop in my book.
Right. And yet the hall rental is the same. I mean, unless.
And the food was the similar also.
Right, so.
Rich and I had went through the individual, and we saw that there was a lot of events that were slightly different. Maybe some B and I or.
B and I doesn't, B and I doesn't have alcohol.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a morning event.
Okay.
So all those B and I events, which, one of the, the second one is new, so that's additional revenue that we have for hall rental. But there's no bar, no food. And it's been a change in some of the events, you know? I mean, we have a, a high school graduation party. Most times, they don't want a bar at all.
Yeah. They just bring in their own soda or whatever.
You know, or they sell soda. I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's not a big take on that.
But for the contract, I believe that the overall number is when they're supposed to be hitting.
Yeah.
That they don't make with that drop. So they have a performance clause in their contract. And I think Rich has a copy of the contract on him. And they didn't make it for twenty nineteen. I think they made it twenty seventeen. I don't know that they made it twenty eighteen. Because they had half of the twenty seventeen.
Right, they started November first.
It was, it's a, yeah.
It's a skewed, it's a skewed thing. You almost have to do it November first to November first.
Like a half a year on that one year because it was.
It's difficult because it's, different times of the year are better than others.
Yeah.
You know, like, right now, it's, you know.
And October's the new June and then.
October was the biggest they ever had. October's become the new April, as far as weddings. But, you know, we have a busy spring, April, May, and June, as normal.
But yeah, there are concerns when you see a, a number skewed down.
Absolutely. And I, I, before we even got to the end of this year, I was asking them about it because I'm saying, why is the bar rental down? As compared to, I was pulling percentages and, and, you know, at the time, it was maybe ten months into that year. And the hall rental percentage was there, the food was a little low, but the bar was down considerably. And I, I questioned it back then, back in May of nineteen.
Just for awareness purposes, I mean, what is, if they don't hit their performance criteria. Just for awareness purposes, I mean, what is, if they don't hit their performance criteria, what is the outcome?
Twenty percent.
It's an escalation clause, it's twenty percent. There's also a performance criteria where they get more, uh, percentage of the, of the take, um, if they, if they meet all of their goals.
Anybody have any questions on the revenue side?
What's your, you know, the fundraiser gift revenue?
Uh, very easy to explain, um, we no longer have the haunted house.
Oh.
That was a twelve thousand dollar, twelve thousand dollar number.
Gotcha.
So that's why that's fifty.
So that, that line alone would be the haunted house by itself?
Pretty much. We get, as you can see, sometimes it fluctuates, we get a little bit more, uh, or a little bit less, but, um, that's, that's the, the nut of that is the twelve thousand dollars that we did get from the haunted house.
Gotcha.
Why did we get rid of that?
Um, the group that was doing it decided not to run it anymore. Um, in, um, in hindsight, it's probably just as well, because with the triple E, uh, I don't know how we could've allowed people to be there. So they would've done work in May, June and July to get the thing ready, cause that's when they start. Um, and then we'd have to tell them, sorry, you can't open, um, it would've been a disaster, so, uh, so we're in the process of cleaning that area up, which is costing us fortune. But, that's what's gotta be done.
The, uh, the only other thing, uh, Scott, on the revenue side is that you're using, uh, seventy thousand dollars from retained earnings here. And you're asking for sixty thousand dollars from retained earnings for your capital projects. Uh, there's not enough money, you're short thirty five thousand dollars retained earnings, so you don't have enough.
Excuse me?
Retained earnings is a hundred and twelve thousand.
It's a hundred and twenty four at the end of last year.
I think it's a hundred, does it a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twenty four?
A hundred and twenty four is what was handed to me.
I think you're right, Scott.
Okay, either case, it's still short, so.
Still short.
Because you got seventy thousand here.
Yep.
And you got, um, I think, where's the capital plan?
The current year, we have thirty five.
Howdy?
The current year, we have thirty five that we haven't spent.
The capital improvements is sixty, and you have the, obviously, the retained earnings is seventy, so one thirty.
I was under the assumption that that, that was my capital improvement line. Not, in addition to that, that, that is my capital improvement line.
Yeah. This seventy is your capital improvement line, not for, not in the capital plan or? Thirty, thirty is his capital improvement.
For the current year?
Yeah. I'm talking about twenty one.
Right, I, sixty, sixty five?
No, that's twenty one.
Sixty five or seventy?
So the twenty one capital is thirty thousand requested. I think.
But it was sixty five.
Okay, sixty five, right. I guess according to-
Twenty and thirty, so thirty, forty, fifty, sixty five.
Well, you got sixty thousand in your capital as well, right, in your budget. So your total budget is three thirty five.
Yeah.
Right, and you only got revenue of, uh, yeah, excuse me, your expenses are three seventy, and your revenue's only, only thirty?
Expenses are three seventy, expenses are three thirty five, it matches, we have to have it balanced. Enterprise, we have to be balanced.
A new one that just came in?
This is the new one that came in from Mike on.
So this is different than what was proposed before, right?
Proposed when?
I don't know, the first budget we got.
I had one that made you, but Mike admitted it, cause the lines were off, he said.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there, cause what I-
You have one that says three thirty five?
This is-
Yes, cause there were changes, I was given changes by Maureen that we had to accoun- account for.
With the indirect costs?
Correct, correct. And those went up, so we had, we had to change. The liability, the liability insurance went up, the indirect charges to town, to the town went up.
Okay.
By threefold.
Well.
FICA went up, all that went up. So we had to readjust.
Then this figure down here didn't get adjusted, the expense budget. On the summary sheet, were the revenue projections?
No.
Didn't get adjusted.
Showing a deficit of thirty five.
Okay.
It's three thirty five, three thirty five, I'm-
It's not on ours, ours is-
The revenues kind of still have imbalance.
It's, it's in balance. It's in balance.
I'm just telling you, Scott, the one that we have.
Okay.
Is different than what you said there. Okay, let's go to the expenses, anybody got any questions on the revenue side? Okay, let's go to the expenses. So, um, I, I met with the park commission back in December. And we talked about better utilizing the staff between the highway department and the park commission. I met with you and, uh, Mike, you once, you and Mike twice. And, uh, we discussed the, uh, option of having the highway department, you know, take over the responsibility of everything outside the buildings to, to maintain the property. Have you guys made a decision which you wanna do?
Uh, we haven't been able to meet in the last few weeks, um, to finalize anything, um, we've had people out of town, people sick, people surgeries. So we haven't had a meeting, we haven't been meeting Thursday, um, we haven't had a meeting in the past three and a half weeks. Yeah, I mean, we, we're, you know, kind of a rock and a hard place, uh, as far as that, um.
Either you wanna do it or you don't wanna do it, it's as simple as that.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, I've, I've gotta get the feel from the other three guys, I mean, I know how Mike feels and how I feel, and whatever it takes to get the job done.
Well, the problem that you have now, we're, we're the first part of March.
Yep.
Grass is gonna start growing in a couple of weeks. You got nobody to do it, right now, cause Mike is retired, Mike retires on March thirty first.
I know that.
So what are you gonna do?
I haven't been in touch with Maureen, but I know Mike has, I, I thought we were moving forward on-
He said yes, wait for a vote to tell me.
Yeah, no, I, 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 no, I know that, and that's been part of our problem, is, is, is too, um, but-
And how do you feel about it?
I mean, I, I'd just as soon go back to the way it was, I don't, you know, we, we, Mike worked, um, someone working from the highway for part of the year.
Right, but the way this is gonna be structured is that all the staff, including the foreman or whatever you wanna call that person, hustle labor will report to the highway superintendent.
Okay, are, are we gonna have any input as to things that need to get done?
Of course you would.
Okay, alright, well, that wasn't expressed in the last meeting we had.
Oh, I would say that it was.
Okay. That wasn't the way it came across to me. I, I, we weren't asking for anyone to report to us, we just wanna, if, if, if we're funding the position, are, are we gonna be funding that position now?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, we're gonna take the money somewhere.
I, I, I'm just, well, I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, and I, I think part of the consensus was, were we gonna have any control over, over that person or anybody that, that, that comes in there, I mean, there's, there's things that need to be done, people come to us, they don't go to the highway to ask to have things done at the park, the different groups. But that's all, that's all we're asking for.
Well, it's not gonna be a case where you're gonna call tomorrow and say to the highway guy, you need to do this tomorrow, we just can't do that. We need plans, understand what needs to be done, and there should be a plan put together of what needs to be done at the Ted Williams camp. And there's a lot that needs to be done, and there's no plan in place right now, is there?
Well, I mean, only cause Mike has been here for so many years, he knew what to do.
No, but there's a lot of stuff that hasn't been done over there, the trails haven't been done, you know, a, a lot of, um, the parking lots, you know, haven't been maintained, the, uh, whole bunch of things, you know, trees are down all over the place, they need to be cut, Claire Pond's, Claire Pond's got a lot of problems over there.
Yes, it does. We address them in the springtime, the highway's never, they've never gone in there and, and cut trees in there, we've always had to hire someone.
But we're saying we could do that. If we had the staff to do it. Not big trees, we can't cut the big trees down, but we can go in and clean all the brush and all, all the branches that are all over the place. But, you, you're out of time. You know, and we can't expect the highway department to say, okay, we're gonna go do this now. You know, we don't have the staff to do it, and Mike's gone on March thirty first, and we asked him if he'd continue on for a couple of months, and he, he's not, he's going away. So, and then, besides that, you got another field, two other fields you gotta have cut. That's another problem, how are you gonna take care of those?
The staff?
Who's gonna maintain the equipment over there? Cause Mike could maintain the equipment, you don't have a person, or you would hire a person that could, you know, take care of the lawnmowers, fix the lawnmowers, fix all the equipment and so forth.
That was our goal last year. That's what we were, what we were planning on doing when Mike left, was to hire our own person.
Okay, so that's what you wanna do?
I didn't say that, I said that was our goal last year. I said, it's, it's changing.
Oh, you can't dump this on the highway department in a couple of weeks.
I realize that.
You know? Okay.
I have a meeting coming up with Mike, um, and Franklin, um, we can make it so it's after their meeting, so we can try to get a jump.
Well, first of all, the, the commission, I mean, this has been going on for over two months now. And they had the opportunity to decide, cause they knew that Mike Vickery was leaving and he was retiring. So, like we said, you had one or two options, either the, either the highway department takes it over and hires the personnel needed to do the job, or you do it on your own, and so here we are, March second or third, and we still don't know what we're gonna do. That's a problem, major problem, you're gonna have grass growing over there pretty soon, cause we've had such a mild winter. I mean, the equipment, he's, hasn't even been, you know, maintained or whatever, you know, up to date.
Mike left it up to date. I guess one of, one of my questions was, uh, so if, if the highway comes in and takes over, this is just a question. Um, are they gonna use our equipment, are they gonna use their equipment? We were talking about going out and buying another piece of equipment to mow the grass out there, are we gonna do that? I'm just asking, who's gonna, who's gonna do it?
Well, a lot of times, the highway department uses their own equipment, like John Pond. They get down there, they bring all their equipment down there with the highway guys, and cut all, they're doing that now. I mean, it's not, you know, so, we're not charging you for that, but they go down and they do it every Thursday, and cut the grass, and it looks pretty, really good.
I know they do.
So, why is there objection, we do John Pond and we can't do Ted Williams camp, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Do you wanna meet with the board of selectmen and discuss the whole thing, the park commission and the board of selectmen, to hash it all out?
Probably a good idea.
And have, like, the highway guy there too, Franklin, and anyone else that we see. If that's what's gonna help make the decision.
We have a meeting on Thursday.
I'll follow up on Friday.
Okay, okay.
Cause I can't make that decision on my own.
I didn't say you couldn't, Scott. Talking about it for a while.
Yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
Uh, I guess there's no reason to discuss this budget any further till we get an answer.
Okay.
Um, just one other thing, um, actually, a couple of other things. The, uh, the current management agreement, um, is gonna be up for renewal, and, uh, we'd like to, uh, put together a new RFP. So, uh, I don't know who on the commission wants to work with, uh, Maureen and I to put that RFP together, so we can get that going.
Discuss that on Thursday. I can't speak to the other guys, it's, who would like to hear it?
Oh, we, we don't have a copy of the, uh, of the bar service contract, we only have the one that expired, was there a new contract signed?
Did the bar service themselves?
England Bar Service.
I don't know. When did that expire?
Uh, two thousand seventeen. And it's year to year. It was originally signed in two thousand and sixteen, and I assume it's year to year, but we don't have any other years.
I, I didn't sign the contract, so I, I'm assuming not then, if it's not there.
Check and see if, now they might have one somewhere, if not.
We, we don't have one.
Lori doesn't have one either, right?
Nope, that's where I got that one from. The cleaning service, there was a debate about the cleaning service, um, and according to the management agreement, there's supposed to be a cleaning service, and that contract is supposed to be signed by the town, there is no cleaning service contract.
Not with the town, no, whatever agreement they made was with SEN?
No, the contract, the management, management agreement says that the contract for cleaning service is supposed to be made with the town.
I understand that.
So, that wasn't done there.
I don't believe so.
Well, it's a liability for the town. You know, for these people to go in there and clean that place, and if there's no contract, that's a problem. I assume they have a copy of the minute on it, right?
I do.
Okay.
I don't have a living.
You can have a copy for now. So, we have to decide on the cleaning service, there's no contract for them, and we don't have a current contract for the, uh, the bar service. Okay, thanks.
Anybody from the finance committee? Thank you, Scott. Do you guys want a five minute break before we? You want a five minute break, John? You sure?
Okay, the fire chief.
Fire chief. Public safety?
It's, uh, two twenty. And, uh, as was instructed with the other departments, that, uh, we asked the fire chief to put together a maintenance budget, and what it was gonna take, uh, to maintain the budget, and we have, and don't forget, this does not include any contract negotiations at this point.
Okay.
Hi.
So, um, how, basically, I'll give you a, a summary of how our budget stands to this point, FY two thousand twenty. We have an operating budget of, uh, just over one point four million. Um, despite some staffing issues and some equipment issues, um, we're expected to finish on budget or maybe slightly over. Uh, as far as revenue, we've done very well this year, and we have, uh, we're projected to have a twenty two percent increase in our EMS revenue. Uh, we're, uh, supposed to get thirty five thousand dollars back on our mass health, uh, reimbursement. And our permits and, uh, fees revenue held steady at about a ten thousand dollars. Right now, uh, sixty one percent of our operating budget is offset by our revenue. And it's understand, we're not talking about capital tonight, is that correct, Sam?
Correct.
Okay, so get into our, our line changes. Right now, we, we're asking for an additional ten thousand dollars in a, in a new line item, cause it's called a temporary emergency account. In, in the past, what happened was, in the past, we had a, we had a account, one account that was labeled as emergency, and all of my callbacks and all the money that was spent- and all of my callbacks and all the money that was spent on responding to fires, medicals, all the off-duty people that came in, was drawn from that single line item account. And so I had the inability to track really what, how much money I was spending on vacant positions. So if there was an injury or an illness, or somebody left the department, or was at the academy, that shift needed to be covered, and it was drawn from the other emergency line item. So this line item with this ten thousand dollar amount allows me to track the expense, that specific expense. The other thing that we have here is we have a removal of seven thousand dollars, that was the Burt Mason money. We no longer have an agreement with Burt Mason, so that money's been transferred to a town account. Uh, we've been overspending our fuel line item for the past two years. We, uh, we actually, as part of the Green Communities, uh, grant process, I was asked about that, and we are experiencing, uh, we do a lot more training, our training documents, our documented trainings are up over a hundred percent, and our response, uh, our response practices have changed, so our vehicles are getting used more. So that accounts for the increased fuel usage. I hope to see with some newer vehicles coming online, we see a dip in, in maybe some more fuel-efficient vehicles being used.
The fuel's only over a couple of thousand dollars.
Yeah, it still bothers me. It still bothers me.
No.
So, I'm requesting that eventually I'd get an opportunity to address some of my proposed changes. Uh, we're going through, um, we're going through, actually, you know, Lake is a growing community, and the traditional staffing model that we've been using for the last twenty years is, uh, becoming an issue. And so I know it's not the time and place, you want to do the maintenance budget, I would welcome the opportunity to go over my, uh, my problem and figure out how to address it properly.
Chief, did you say the budget requested was one million four twelve that I missed?
No, that's the, that's the current budget, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
There's really very little change, um, we have some, you know, at maintenance, we have a downturn in the salaries of firefighters, that's just because of the seniority of the firefighters has changed. There's some other minor adjustments there, uh, going around, but other than that, is there any questions or anything I missed, please look to discuss?
Oh, it looks like, you know, a slight reduction.
Yeah, outside of the union, whatever the union.
Right, right, right.
That'll pull shit right back up.
Right. I would say, you know, what we should do is, as a board, is, um, meet with the chief and talk about his proposal, because, you know, it was, not picking on the chief, but he sent it to me Friday night, so.
It's, it's difficult coming in.
So, we'd give you the opportunity to discuss it, so.
I appreciate it.
And so maybe, I don't know, certainly not this week, but maybe the, are we meeting on the ninth and the sixteenth, or?
We don't have any business really that can't wait till the sixteenth, so I was hoping not to have to meet on the night, but if we wanna put a special meeting together to meet with the chief, or if more business comes in.
I don't think that that's necessary, but the sixteenth.
Plenty of time between now and July, so it's.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do the sixteenth.
I appreciate it, that's, uh.
Part of that same discussion is, if he talks about two firefighters, back to that safer grant proposal that Michael had given. So, I don't care if he talks about it tonight or not tonight, but we took that off the agenda, and it hasn't found its way back on there yet.
Yeah, we had, I think, approved the first two things, and then just sort of tabled the safer grant. So if you wanna revisit on the sixteenth, we can revisit.
I think that the chief is concerned about that, that the safer grants are, you just don't apply and get it.
It's a long shot.
It's a long shot for us. Most of it goes to the cities and so forth. So his concern is the short term, because even if he did apply for it now, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think I read your email, it's, you know, two years out, before we even get the opportunity to get it. They're already filled, I don't know how the program works, but, so that's what his concern is, John. So you gotta be careful, though, because if you hire these two, if we do go hire two new people, and then we apply for the safer grant, they can't mix together, you gotta hire two more, you know, on top of that, so you gotta be careful what you do, and I, I think his concern is now, and not two years from now.
You'd be correct.
You're correct?
Yep.
That's the problem with safer grant, well, and you may, the chances of getting it are probably twenty-five percent if lucky.
Since the time we've, I've, in passing, spoken to people from three different, not even whatever, they're like, oh, yeah, my, we're applying for the safer grant in my town, and whatever, I'm like, okay.
It's worth a shot, but it's kind of like we're caught in limbo, where by the time a firefighter arrived, it would be, you know, it's, it's an immediate need, I guess, is what I'm trying to think. It's a tough spot to be in, because of course I'd rather pay for, you know, funded position with a grant, I'll just, it's a better way.
Yeah. So, sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
I'd be happy.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, very happy.
Okay.
Do we have a nighttime or daytime, or do we wanna split it up for another meeting?
Um, I don't think we have to split it up, but we have special guests that night, I don't know, depending on their timing, I guess we'll work the timing.
Yeah, the crowd business is probably gonna be busy tonight, since we're bumping everything out, but.
Yeah, well, there's nothing right now, right, Tracy? I think everything.
We distributed it between Wednesday and Thursday night.
Yeah, so right now, we actually have.
There's one thing.
One license.
The junk dealer licenses, but those can wait till the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but that's why I'm saying, if anyone wants to, you know, have a conversation next week, that's pretty free, but.
I would suggest that we.
Is it a daytime meeting instead of a nighttime?
And you're leading up to that, if anybody wants background or situation awareness, I'd be happy to meet with anybody, anytime.
But your justification is the same theory you did with the safer grant. That is, it's no different, other than one's through a grant and one's through a request of two firefighters.
It's, uh, yeah, they're very similar, basically it's the same.
The numbers, right, the theory, and then the numbers don't change, and if you're gonna try to justify it under the grant, you're trying to justify it anyways, based on the calls, that type of.
If the finance committee would like to be there for, you know, as a committee or not.
I think the board should discuss it first.
Yeah.
We'll be meeting back with the finance committee anyway, so.
Yeah, but in case, if they wanna be there to hear.
And they're welcome to come, sure.
Right, we can definitely let you know what time we're gonna be.
I can get some better, um, I can get some better information about the timeline for the safe grant, but, uh, like you said, it's a, it's a Hail Mary, and it's, it's a ways off.
Yeah, and it's not a guarantee. It's always no if you don't ask, but, you know, it's not a guarantee either, so in the meantime, we should just be looking at the request.
Right, when we applied on April eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, we did get a fairly quick response, which was a no, but it was a quick response. We didn't wait a long time to get that response.
They feed your application into a computer, and they give it a point score, and if it doesn't make the minimum point score, it gets dropped immediately.
Right, and, and I mean, I certainly have implied to you to get the horsepower necessary to write a proper grant. Whatever, whatever that means, whether that's someone that's got them in the past.
That's my experience.
But got them in the past. What, what differentiates the people that were lucky enough to get them, and we've not been able to get them, so. I get that he would do it, and he's a great grant writer, but we haven't got one yet.
No, he's written a successful one for, for Free Town, so I mean, if.
For a safer grant?
Yeah.
So what the hell'd you do that for, not for Lake?
I haven't been asked about it, because, like.
Well, I mean, right, that, that's then, I.
I backed down as soon as I told you to do it.
Grant's a good deal, seventy-thirty split is a good deal, and to turn it down on a timely basis, we act since April two thousand and eighteen. Now gonna be April two thousand and twenty.
Two years.
We should've done it right along, year to year.
What's the year combined grant total right now that we have out pending, this year?
Um, we're looking at probably one hundred and seventy-five, roughly.
So you have one hundred and seventy-five thousand?
But the horsepower is in the manpower, and that's what we need to solve. And the equipment's the equipment, and, and that's a good thing to do, the training is a good thing to do, but if we're looking for two firefighters for the long term, the grant cycle is what we should be trying to do.
One of the, I guess, one of the biggest core drawings, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, is that you have to obtain some kind of a goal, like a two-in, two-out rule, or a seventeen-twenty-one, which is like the response time rule. So if you, if you narrate the grant to say you're achieving some type of, uh, an OSHA standard or an NFBA standard, then, then your points go through the roof.
Yeah. Well, certainly we don't meet the standards of the number of people responding, so you have the basis for it, and if, and if he's the person for the grant writing, I don't object, but whatever horsepower you may need in addition to, even if you paid someone to assist him, I have no objection if he does it by himself. But call in the horsepower that you need to get it done.
And I appreciate the opportunity on the sixteenth to communicate with you guys.
Make sure we put him last on the agenda.
That's my spot.
No.
Just before Mike Rogers. We'll tie him up.
You have visitors that night, so.
And I just, one other thing, um, I see you got the, uh, some money for the turnout gear, which is great. Um, I don't know if you're aware of this, but, uh, there's been a some appropriation that's been sitting out there, and online's been sitting out there, for turnout, uh, turnout gear, and the amount of forty-six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Yeah, that was formerly about, I think it was eighteen thousand dollars, and we've been identifying and replacing gear with it. Basically, the gear has, can't be any more than ten years old to be in code, so we kind of, we've been using our gear up to ten years, and then replacing.
I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that money.
Yeah, the turnout gear money, the grant was free money, so I went for it.
No, no, that's great, that's good. Um, the other thing is, where I was, um, the capital plan is concerned that, um, we haven't discussed the capital plan, or the capital expenditure committee hasn't met to discuss that plan yet either, so that's probably a couple of weeks, few weeks out anyways. But, um, I know that one of the, um, one of the concerns is trying to address, you know, some of the current needs, you know, in the fire stations, so, you know, we need to talk about that as well, because we're not gonna solve it overnight, but at least if we can address some of the immediate concerns.
And Mike's working on that currently.
On the building, you mean, the identifying and just to.
Yeah, as far as people, personnel, where, you know, what the physical space needs to look like.
Okay.
Realistic, not, not harbor.
And certainly when we talk about the one point one million of free cash, one of my suggestions obviously would be to put two hundred thousand dollars towards the fire department, most of it, uh, under Nate's purview, which would make great headways in the physical outlay of a lot of it, clean up the things that are very obvious to us.
Well, we need to know what obvious means.
All right, I'll do my best to identify that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you all for coming. So we already did agenda item number two. We are agenda item number three, uh, discuss the FY twenty-one budget summary. Are you guys gonna hang out with us, you're gonna?
Yeah, I think just for a few minutes.
For a few minutes, if you want.
Um, the, uh, the budget summary sheet, which is, um, somewhere in the first packet, that says sources and uses fiscal twenty-one budget.
After the cherry sheets?
This one here.
After the cherry sheets, right.
So, just, just briefly, and, you know, go over this, because I know, especially Brian isn't, you know, familiar with this at all. You got the right one, Brian, all set?
We're working on it.
Yeah, right, right?
Yeah.
It's got some highlights.
Oh, you got it, okay, all set. So this is really, uh, it's broken up into two different sections, and the first section is the revenue section. And basically, um, the levy is last year's tax levy that was, you know, with all the tax bills and so forth, and the personal property tax and et cetera, so that was twenty-three million, six twenty-seven, okay? Then, uh, every year, you're allowed to add two and a half percent, under Prop two and a half, to that amount, and that is five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Then we add new growth, and the new growth number is, you know, right now, we did, which is just trying to project, you know, with the assessors, a number of four hundred and ten thousand dollars, and you can see that last year, I think, was actually the, the last one, anyway, it was four oh four. So that number may fluctuate some as we go along here in the next couple of months, um, but I think that, that, that's a conservative number.
Is that new builds, or?
New builds, you know, new houses, you know, additions, you know, stuff like that.
Rich, what's the other one thirty-five T A?
That's, so we have an amount that's an actual amount, and the actual amount, I added a hundred and thirty-five, and that's where I came up with our conservative amount of four-ten. It could, right now, where we are compared to where we were last year, we look like we could be about four-twenty-five, but.
So if we subtract one thirty-five from that, that's the actual at the moment, or is it the other way around?
Correct.
That's the actual at the moment.
That's what the assessors have right now, okay? But like I said, as the couple of months go on here, they'll be adding, you know, to it, right, definitely. So we feel that, you know, the four-ten number is a conservative number. One of the things that, um, I, I try to be as conservative as possible, you know, so I don't wanna over-project something and then say, oh, jeez, we're gonna have a hundred thousand dollars for, you know, two firefighters, and say, oops, we don't have a hundred thousand dollars, you know? So, the goal, the goal here, my goal, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, is to sustain both the revenue and the expenses to where we are today, because in the past, there's been stuff that's been used for one-time revenue to do, you know, certain things and so forth. In my opinion, that is the start, you know, so this budget is, that's the way this budget is structured, okay? So, um, the next item is nine twenty-eight, and that's our, um, that's our current debt, debt exclusions only, which is an override that was passed years ago, some of it was eighteen, twenty years ago, but. And then the, uh, the next one down is the debt exclusion for the region, which is two ninety-eight. So that brings us to twenty-five million, you know, eight fifty-five. And then you add the cherry sheets, which is the state aid numbers, is one million, six eighty-eight, four oh one. And basically overall, we got about a sixty-one thousand dollar increase over last year, and those sheets are behind you here, you know? All that stuff is there. And then the local receipts, the local receipts, the big number is, of course, excise tax, you know, bills, uh, permits, fees, ambulance fees, and so forth, and that adds up to, um, three million, five fifteen, and Maureen working with the town accountant, and that sheet is in here too, showing the actuals, the nineteen, where we are, and projecting those numbers out, so that increased by about a hundred thousand dollars overall, okay? We probably could've gone higher, but once again, we wanna be conservative, we don't wanna get burned, because if you don't have enough money available, then that affects the budget next year, okay? So we're projecting thirty-one million, oh fifty-eight, our three point eight percent increase. The other areas, um, we're not recommending, um, using free cash for the, uh, the budget. We recommend free cash be used for capital items only, because they're one-time items. Once again, we don't wanna get ourselves in a position where we're using free cash to balance, you know, the budget, okay? And we already talked about the overlay. to balance, you know, the budget, okay? And we already talked about the overlay, it was $30,000, and we'll probably get, once they vote it, another $100,000, you know, out of that.
Rich, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
On the free cash, you'll notice that there's nothing listed in the free cash line for 2020. It's because we didn't have a fall town meeting, so we didn't vote in free cash. There is, is it 1.1?
1.1, 1 billion 1.
1.1 in there that you can put pencil in as a placeholder, but we need to vote that at the special...
But we're not voting this, we're not putting making that part of our operating budget.
No, but it's just a line that was skipped over with nothing in it, so I didn't want them to...
No, there shouldn't be a line there, because this is revenues that are going to be used to offset the budget.
Okay.
So it's zero.
Gotcha.
Because last year, they used 183, and this year, we're proposing zero.
Yep, and then the line below it is the capital other.
Next item down is the septic loan program, where the town lends money, and people are put in septic systems, and they pay back principal and interest payments. So going down, we talked about the overlay, setting aside $155,000 for provision for abatements and exemptions, and the other items there are charges back from the state. Once again, they're listed in a report back end, you can look at those, okay? Everything from Plymouth County to, you know, whatever, there's three or four major ones. And then the town has subsidized, has already subsidized the landfill, which is $100,000, last year it was $90,000. So if you take all the budgets, which is below, by categories, which we just are talking about, and you add those all up, so they come to $30,962,000, so we're short by $320,000. But we haven't met with the regional school committee yet, that's planned to be done on the 19th, I believe, if I, oh, it's right there, we're going to discuss their budget, we can't accept the budget of $968,000 increase, we just can't do that.
Right.
So...
Is that factored into this, their current?
The full budget, they got, their full budget requested is in here.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So now we have to do is, the school committee's got to look at that budget and determine, you know, what they're going to have to reduce to get down to a more reasonable number.
Well, they were pleased, you just gave them a number at all.
Well, that was a ballpark.
I know, but you were thrilled.
But, you know, so based upon, you know, where we are now, from what I can see, without any additional increases, okay? Once again, this doesn't include all the union contracts and so forth, but we have a placeholder for an estimate of what they may be, along with the cost of living increase, and that's, that's the deal.
Articles on capital.
Is listed as 225. We don't know exactly where we're going to be, hopefully it'll come in around that number. So based on that, you know, without the region, O'Colony is $44,000, which is a reasonable increase, which is, once again, if you look at the educational piece, you'll see that. Overall, without anything else, we're not including capital now, capital's completely separate, because we're going to take all those from free cash, whatever we do, we're in good shape.
Questions?
What's the history on the stabilization fund? So I assume you started ramping up pretty significantly, and now we're down to zero at the moment. Is that, is there...
Is that OPEB?
No. No. Is it used in the stabilization fund?
Transfer OPEB, transfer of stabilization funds, right at the very bottom, zero and zero in yellow.
I'm sorry, where are you, Brian?
He's down there.
Highlighted.
So last year was 630.
Oh, yeah.
That was our...
Sorry, 691.
Yeah, the stabilization, no, we don't, the stabilization, once again, we want to try to maintain the stabilization fund as much as we can, and once again, I think it's about $1,001,000, it's in here too.
So that was kind of a catch-up year then, last year, to get it back?
Well, if this money's available, you know, a lot of times, you use free cash, you put $100,000 in or whatever.
Okay.
So there's two accounts that exist, one is, let me get to that page there, it's two $1 million accounts of debt service and stabilization, and they've just been maintained at that similar level. And what we've been doing is paying for capital and one-time funds out of the free cash money.
Special reserve funds is the name of the sheet, and it's five ahead of where you were before.
Five ahead.
So, I mean, those balances are good, you know, in case of emergency or something like that, you know, but we have...
Sorry, what was the articles' capital again, of only $30,000 for 2020?
Which one?
Oh, that's the increase, sorry, it's 978, that's the increase. Got it, thanks.
So once again, being conservative, you know, we're going to try to use the $1,001 or whatever it is, you know, for capital items.
Okay.
Oh, the other good news was, Maureen, our health insurance cost is only going up 3.9 percent, we haven't got to, that's the next meeting, but it's going up 3.9 percent, that, believe me, that's big help, because when you got a $2 million cost for health insurance, it goes up 10 percent, I mean, that's $200,000. So, I mean, that's a good number.
And what, so you have 1, 1 in free cash, what's your, what do you want to spend that on?
We haven't decided yet, because we haven't reviewed the capital plan.
Which already took 100 out of the assessors, so you have some number in the back of your mind. Are you going to fund OPEB?
I haven't decided yet.
You haven't decided?
I want to talk about all those things. The OPEB was funded out of the existing budget this year, the last two years, I'm sorry. The OPEB was funded out of the operating budget two years ago, then the board of selectmen removed that, and took that $200,000 to hire more people and expenses. So there was nothing put in...
What, are you nuts?
I'm telling you.
Where do you get that number from?
I'm not...
It was funded out of free cash, $400,000, 230 was put in OPEB, and then 400.
I said two years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
No, it's been funded out of...
Oh, it hasn't, anyways.
Out of free cash.
So we'll look at that when we get to that point, and if we decide to put money into OPEB, we'll fund it out of free cash.
Right. When they did the presentation, when the trust fund people came here a couple of weeks ago, they certainly insinuated that 315 is the number that was given to them years ago, and that's the number that we would have expected to put in. If it was the old select group, if you will, they would fund that out of a 1, 1. They would take 1, 1, fund repair and maintenance, additional funds to Nate Darling, in particular for the fire department, fund OPEB, and buy capital equipment, where it's not been paid for, it's not been financed in recent years, it's been paid for out of free cash.
We got a lot of capital needs.
Great, so we get to do this tomorrow again?
Wednesday.
Are you happy?
Wednesday.
I'm sorry.
Don't come tomorrow, George.
As we all enjoy it, George.
Bring your book, George.
Don't come tomorrow.
Tomorrow's the...
Bring your book, George.
The day of rest.
Okay, agenda item number four.
Could we just adjourn?
Sure.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, agenda item number four, does anyone have new business? New business going once. Agenda item number five, old business.
Yeah, thanks.
Old businesses will be meeting on Wednesday and Thursday for our next budget meetings. Agenda item number six, any other business that may properly come before the meeting?
One item, I let the board know that I will be meeting with other, virtual meeting with other town administrators to discuss responses to the coronavirus, along with the health agent, and anyone else that has some great suggestions on what to do moving forward.
I happened to overhear some of the state call today, so be really curious to hear what else you may have to offer. Anybody else? Okay. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.